Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us this evening. Both the mayor and Alder, and Wayland is not able to join us this evening, so I'll be leading the meeting tonight. And the first thing we have up on our agenda is the public hearing on tax rates. And this is the tax levy for the year 2024, a tax of sixty-seven point five zero cents upon each and every one hundred dollars assessed valuation of real estate and personal property within the corporate limits of the city assailant area for general revenue purposes. So at this time, I will open this up for public hearing and anyone wishing to speak on the tax levy is welcome to come to the podium. You heard it.
I'm sorry, what was the rate?
The rate is sixty-seven point five zero cents.
So, a tenth of a penny per hundred?
Yeah, sixty-seven point five zero cents for every one hundred dollars assessed.
Seven cents for every one hundred. Sixty-seven or seven, I'm sorry?
Sixty-seven point five, yeah.
Uh, do I need to go to the podium?
Yes, please. Everyone can hear you now.
I came unprepared.
That's okay.
But I will see. I think one of the problems that many people have, did I, do I need to turn anything?
No, you're good.
Okay. Uh, it's when you're, we're told something in the city that if later on, we're told, well, sorry, but we're gonna have to raise rates. One of the problems with this is we just had rate increase in Salem. After we had the big display, if you don't vote this in, you're going to have to pay a lot. If you, so everybody, you gotta vote for it. So we passed it, and then we got a raise. So it's, it's kind of hard to say now, well, we need more money. You probably do. What I'm saying is somehow, we're not communicating enough to the citizens. Because when we say, when, when we do one thing and then get the increase anyway, and now there's another, of getting another increase, I think you need to consider that. And then I understand that possibly, I, I'll shorten this. I had a complaint today about somebody saying, well, I heard that we're gonna try to hire somebody to bring in, in more commerce. Well, that means another salary. Not that it's bad, but in this economy, not many people are starting new businesses. So you, I think you need to think about that too. And it's just, those are just thoughts. Sorry, I wasn't prepared to present.
Thank you. And I should clarify, uh, this is not an increase. This is the same rate that has been in past several years, and what's being proposed tonight is gonna be the same rate as what the prior.
I'm sorry?
On, on the podium, there's a sheet, if it looks like this.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and so it shows going all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight, what the tax rate has been, the property tax rate for the city. And this year, this rate that you see on the screen, the point six, seven, five, zero is not an increase, it's exactly the same. We, we are required by state law to hold public hearings every year on what that property tax rate is.
Okay.
So this is not asking for an increase.
I wanted to get that other off my chest anyway. So, there you go.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure everyone understood that. And on this sheet as well, if you wanna look at it, one, one column is from ninety-eight was the approved rate by the board since nineteen ninety-eight. The other column is the one that's proposed by the state auditor's office. So that way you have both sets of numbers if you want.
Okay.
Anyone else would like to speak on the tax levy? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this time, I will call the record alter committee to order and ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Very lovely, Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this community and everyone here. We ask for your blessing and help as we're gathered together this hour to conduct city business and make decisions that will affect our community. And we thank you for all the years for us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Going over, roll call. Mayor Parker's absent, Alderwoman Dent.
Here.
I am present. Alderwoman Wayland is absent. Alderwoman Siscoe.
Present.
And we have City Administrator Burbridge.
Present.
City Clerk Culver.
Present.
City Attorney Webber.
Present.
Hoodwork Director Payne.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase.
Present.
Finance Director Houston. I see we have Jared Brown with code enforcement, and we have Melissa Parks, Josh with electric, Josh with wastewater. Chris with water. And we, that is all. All right. Um, next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And we will need a full resolution nineteen dash twenty-two four from our agenda as regarding the agreement on the nine-one-one services. We're still negotiating on that contract. This won't be the final version. Motion is second.
I would move to approve the agenda with the exclusion of the contract for the nine-one-one.
I second the motion.
Motion is second. I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Siscoe.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda. I second the motion.
Motion is second. I'll call for the vote. Alderwoman Siscoe.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next up is the public comments, and we have, um, one form submitted, and that's Nate Jordan regarding the Ford Street Mall. And ask Mr. Jordan to please come to the podium.
I understand most of this matters here as civil matter. But does a city allow a business to operate their business with flashlight without the lighter being on in the, in a store? That's why I'd like to ask you, uh, my representative asked me to come up here and ask you guys about that. You know, is it legal to run a store without the lighter being on? Walk through there with a flashlight? That's why I wanted to ask you.
Okay.
And that's all I got to say. The rest of them, like I said, is civil matter. Could you answer that? Is that legal in the city of Salem?
But this is the, what you want.
Do you care if I address this?
Sure, go ahead.
So if you have concerns with regards to code enforcement, or whether there's a violation of some sort of safety code within the city of Salem, or they should report it to the code officer, Jared Brown, or report it to law enforcement? And if there's a violation?
I did report them, sir.
Okay.
And they told me, take it up with the city. That's the reason I'm here.
Well, if, if there's a violation, then the process is they would prepare a report documenting the code violation. There's various steps depending on what the violation is that they have to walk through. And then if it's something that reaches the level of citation, then they would submit a citation, and then it would be prosecuted in municipal court.
Okay, I thank you. Now, who do I need to get a hold of to do that?
So law enforcement or code enforcement, depending, depending on what the circumstances are, but.
Code enforcement, you said?
Right.
Okay. Um, now, law enforcement, well, I get a hold of the sheriff or the city?
If, if it's a violation of city code, you would contact the city police.
City police, okay. I thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
You all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next side of the agenda is the state transportation presentation. Mr. Williams is gonna do the presentation for us.
Give me a second. Yeah, no, you're fine. Uh, just a clarification. I wouldn't necessarily call it a state transportation. I'm not here with the state. I'm not anybody dealing with that. I'm just a citizen that saw an opportunity. So I wanted to kind of give you guys a, an overview of what I found so far and kind of give a model of what I think. Uh, I think I've talked to most of you before about, uh, trying to get a public city bus, much like Houston, Missouri has. Uh, they have a, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. Uh, but that's what this is about. So I'm kind of looking, so I started looking through it, and it's through the federal fifty-three eleven grant. Uh, so, uh, go ahead to the next one. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what that is, uh, talk about some of the transportation needs that I've seen and found within our own community. Uh, then I'll talk a little bit about Houston and how their program is doing and how they've worked with it, as well as give kind of a financial breakdown of what I think this would run the city. Uh, the overall goal here is to talk to you guys, because I would like to, I would like for the city to apply for this grant. I would help with that, obviously, but, uh, I wanna make sure that you guys are on board before I start doing a bunch of work trying to apply for a grant just to get shut down by what we see here. So I wanted to give some of the numbers and stuff and get a little bit into the details here. So the fifty-three eleven grant is a formula grant, uh, meaning there's a certain percentage of the, the state's budget and everything that has to go towards this, or there's a grant amount, and then certain portions of it have to go to, it's based on formula. So that's what that means. Uh, with this one, one of the pieces of formula are, uh, that the city has to be less than fifty thousand people. Uh, we obviously qualify, and, uh, it has to have like no, it has to have no transportation or little transportation available. Uh, so right now, that's kind of where we lie. Uh, we don't have any sort of public transportation system readily available. There is a paid-for SMTS. I believe they also go through this system, uh, to, to help fund some of their operations, but I'm not a hundred percent there. Uh, I do have a link if you wanna look up, uh, the fact sheet about fifty-three eleven grant, uh, provided on the, uh, packet. Uh, do you wanna go on? So, transportation needs in Salem. Uh, so we know from MRPC, our regional planning commission, uh, that Salem does have a need for public transportation or, uh, alternate modes of transportation. But in a recent study that they performed within our area, looking at Dent County, not Salem specifically, so I'm gonna take Dent County and kind of, uh, assume that those numbers sort of apply to Salem as well. Dent County was shown to have fifteen, of its fifteen thousand residents, uh, and sixty, sixty-five thousand households about. There were three hundred and sixty-five households without a personal vehicle at home, uh, and no real means of transportation. If you take Salem and five thousand people, and kind of third the number that comes from Dent County, that would be estimated around a hundred and twenty-two households that we have here in Salem that don't have any sort of personal transportation. Uh, so that makes it difficult when you're trying to go get groceries. You do have to rely on somebody else or, uh, call ahead of time for SMTS. SMTS has a, one day before you have to, you have to plan ahead. Uh, so, uh, some of the other interesting things that, about our area that would help, uh, I believe this would help a low-income housing, uh, the, the households with low income, as well as the elderly who cannot get out to drive. They may have a vehicle, but may not be able to drive it or, uh, you know, just may not be able to drive it in totality. So I wanted to give some of the stats on that. Salem does have about a twenty percent, uh, elderly, uh, people over sixty-five, uh, and it continues to grow, that we've seen in the last census. Uh, we also have about eleven hundred people that, uh, qualify as disabled, uh, which may not be able to drive. Uh, there's also the aspect of low and no income, fixed income houses, which may not be able to afford a car. Uh, and that runs around eighteen percent. You can't necessarily put all those together and say sixty percent Salem needs a car. But, uh, you know, because there's gonna be people that move into all three of those categories. But there is a need for some sort of public transportation in my opinion. Uh, so, looking at that, uh, I decided to take a look at somebody that has used this grant funding to try to better their, uh, transportation systems. Houston, Missouri does have a shuttle system like this. It is a free shuttle providing twenty stops, uh, with four loops around the city. They also do a pickup of, uh, uh, their, um, sheltered workshop people in the morning and take them to work and, uh, retrieve them to work and take them home at the end of the day as well. So if you look, their schedule is rather shortened. Starts at eight-thirty and then heads to two-thirty. That's because before eight, they're trying to get the, the folks to the shelter workshop. They have around thirty-five riders a day, which is pretty good for their system. And for, if you look at SMTS and other forms of rural transit, they're one of the most successful pieces of public transit and bus systems that we, we can see. Uh, and it is provided absolutely no cost to the, to the riders. Uh, I think that we can use their model to do something for our people as well. Uh, if you estimate that, they have about twenty-two hundred people and are able to do this, I think we could do the same. We have five thousand people. I think we can even get additional ridership and just overall enhance our options, uh, for these people. So, go ahead, move, yeah. So I did a cost breakdown. This is gonna be difficult to see from a distance, especially for those in the crowd, I'm sorry. Uh, the red, uh, on this graph is the federal grant. As you can see, it provides a lot of assistance here. Uh, the fifty-three eleven grant, if you are running a, uh, if you are doing capital expenditures, like getting, uh, buying bus or replacing equipment, things like that, capital expenditures, it, uh, covers up to eighty percent of, uh, there's an eighty percent and a twenty percent local match. So you say like, okay, if you wanted to get a bus, the bus costs a hundred thousand dollars, eighty thousand of that comes from federal funding. Uh, twenty thousand of that would be, uh, of course on us. Uh, there is a local, uh, participation here. Uh, and you can see that kind of maneuvers a little around. Uh, the fifty-three eleven grant provides fifty percent operating assistance to, uh, operational expenses, uh, expenditures. So that can be anything from, uh, your gas, uh, to your bus driver. Uh, I can do fifty percent of that. It can also do eighty percent if you run a non-fixed route paratransit. So if you are doing something with the ADA, ADA and disabled, uh, a route that complies to their, uh, standards, which is a non-fixed route, so it's not strictly along the route, you can deviate from it to pick them up from their house, which I would recommend. It can cover up to eighty percent of operational expenses as well. So that's something. Uh, so yeah, over, overlooking what Houston over the past ten years has done, I estimated it to be around forty thousand dollars is what they spend on average for their system, uh, providing a completely free extra transit option. So, keep that in mind. Uh, move on? All right. And this is impossible, because it's so small. Uh, but basically, right here, I kind of broke down, and I had, uh, when you submit for this grant, you do have to provide a sort of model where you have your capital expenditures, what you plan to buy, how you plan to run it. Uh, so I kind of ran through some numbers, looking at their, uh, financial reports, and took a breakdown of theirs, uh, and applied it to what I think we could do. Uh, and I have a summary of the total expenditures, the operational expenditures, the capital expenditures with the grant, as well as a summary with grant funding down below. That's what these categories are. I would encourage you to look at them. Not from here on the screen.
Copy these numbers.
Yeah. I would encourage you not to look at them here, but on, on the, the packet itself. Uh, let's see, I think is that, is there more? Yeah, so I did take a look, uh, it doesn't have to be a new either. So we could look at used bus options. So I was kind of taking a look at ADA buses, and I would like to try to run an ADA route. Uh, new and purchase range, you can run from about a new, uh, bus, runs around a hundred and ten to a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which, uh, with an annual maintenance cost of twenty, two to three thousand dollars. You know, depreciation over fifteen years, you kind of get some idea, and then you could have warrants to cover your repairs, or you could get used. Uh, I was taking a look at that, and I provided some of those numbers, some options if you would. We could try to go for, uh, used vehicle as well, something that we know works. Uh, but it may have additional, uh, maintenance costs. So I was taking a look at, uh, some of the ideas of those. That's about what you're looking at for a capital expenditure. Go ahead, that's, yeah, so basically, uh, to summarize, I wanna try to get some transportation in. Uh, I ran the numbers. We have a vulnerable population, I believe, that could really use something like this. Uh, we could really, I think we qualify perfectly for this fifty-three eleven grant. Uh, other towns in our area are using it. Uh, I think this is something that we could do. Uh, it would likely, over the years, cost around fifty thousand to the city coffers per year. So I wanted to make that a hundred percent, you know, transparent there. It would cost around forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, you know, my estimation. Uh, but I think this is something that we could really go for, and with your, like, I'm not asking for any sort of vote or anything here, but I just wanted to get your opinion to see, is this something you would want to pursue? Or would you mind if I kept doing it, or is that, you think, looking at something around forty thousand a year, maybe, maybe too much?
I have some questions.
Sure.
Does, um, SMTS service Houston?
SMTS does service Houston, I think. They service down in the southeastern corner. So I do believe that they service, uh, what is it, Texas County as well. Uh, that is something that I was looking at, like just partnering with SMTS Connect, or SMTS and trying to build a connect route just for this. This would open up more options for the city to be able to maneuver the, the transit option, because once, and this would allow the city to, uh, apply for this grant. SMTS already has, I think they get funding through this already.
So and, and, and there would be no problem in having both in town?
No, SMTS still has, I think SMTS still has a role to play. This would be a deviated fixed route, uh, that would be continuous.
Okay.
Uh, so it would run people from, and, uh, just as a, as a quick sign, I did take a poll. Now, it's through Facebook, so, you know, you have to take it with a grain of salt. But I did take a poll to see if anybody would, you know, how many people would like to see this, uh, neighborhood group. Uh, we eventually had fifteen hundred votes on said poll, uh, with about twenty-five different options. People were saying they wanted Walmart, they wanted some of the senior housing, uh, they wanted to go to their doctor's offices, you know, it would be a constant route. Uh, having this open where it would be, uh, you wouldn't have to call ahead of time. You know, you could just go to the bus stop, or you could, you could, we could do a deviated route. Houston does a deviated route, where you do call ahead of time, much like SMTS, and they'll come pick you up. Uh, they just need a, a few hours notice instead of a whole day, and then there's no charge to it as well. So that would be, but we had a lot of, we had a good amount of comments, we had a good amount of feedback from that. I would say about seventy-five percent of the comments were positive. There were some people saying, you know, this is gonna cost a lot, it's not feasible in a town this size. Uh, but as I showed, like, you know, Houston's running it, about twenty-two hundred.
So my next question is, how does Houston's financial condition compare with Salem's financial condition?
In terms of overall condition?
Can you support this?
It, in supporting this, they use it out of a general fund. So, that was something when, uh, when we passed the general fund increase of one percent, uh, we saw that jump in the revenues for the city. I'm just thinking about taking a very small portion of that and applying it to this. Now, I don't know if that's all completely taken by, or, you know, already, uh, what we're doing with it completely today. I know it goes towards the police, the animal control and everything else. Uh, but they use it through their general sales tax fund. Uh, in terms of total budgetary condition, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
So, is it something you think you would like to pursue?
Um, I, I, I think we should look into it more. Um, I would, I personally would like to see, um, just a couple of options. At this point, I think you did a really good job researching, and I think, um, you did a good job of explaining Houston's model. Uh, I would, I would also like to see, uh, SMTS, what their connect services looks like, and what, if, what the cost would be to the city, and if they can provide similar, I mean, the same services that this idea would.
I can answer some of those questions, and I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time there, but I like, uh, I did meet with SMTS. They seemed reluctant to try to do something. They just instilled the SMTS Connect in Ralla, Missouri. And, uh, from what I've understood, uh, as of the last month, I think they've had like, she said ten riders per month, and it doesn't seem like it's going to be an option. I don't know if that's something in their business model or what's, what's going on with that, but it didn't seem feasible to stick around. Uh, that's why I wanted to go through, through with the Houston thing, because not only would we have this as an asset, uh, and a capital asset, because you could use this to do something like, uh, and Houston, I called their bus driver, I'm sorry to get off track again. But this provides additional options, say, for, uh, fireworks at the commons. You could have a bus transit system running around at that time. You could use it for that, or parades, things like that. Uh, so there's other options that, that presents us, having our own system, modifications to the route, uh, who we get to hire, how, you know, if the, the bus gets canceled, or, you know, who we have to run it. Uh, versus, it would be pretty rigid if you were to run through SMTS. I suspected about sixty thousand a year, uh, in totality, to run as SMTS bus, as a connect bus, if the city was to, you know, try to buy into that. So, okay.
I'm pretty curious why SMTS chose Ralla versus a smaller rural, uh, town to test out the SMTS Connect. I feel like the Ralla area probably has more means of transportation for people to where a smaller route like Salem or Houston or something would probably be, would utilize the SMTS Connect more.
Right, yeah. Ralla has things like, uh, a taxi service, it has Uber drivers that are pretty consistent. Uh, while Uber is available in our town, and Lyft is available in our town, we don't have that many drivers because we don't have the demand in that. Uh, SMTS operates typically in larger communities, it seems. Uh, so the other communities that they ran in was Farmington, Poplar Grove. Uh, both of those cities had an SMTS Connect, uh, piece to it. I don't know how they were doing. The only one I knew of was the Ralla one in terms of ridership, and that's because I think it's brand new. Hopefully it catches on. But as far as I know, those are the only three cities that have an SMTS Connect, which is a different program than their usual pluses here.
And I know, at least in southwest Missouri, and I think they have a presence in other counties in the state, the Oates Transportation. Um, they have, um, I think both the vans and the buses, and I've seen them in communities like Mountain Grove and, um, Ava, and some of those other smaller communities. I don't know if they have, um, a, um... bus cycle like, uh, like you're proposing here, maybe similar services to SMTS. Um, those are the, you can call in a day ahead to get, skip a ride. Um, I don't know if they would provide a similar service as well, or, or it, or if there's a territory where they can't be in the county, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into it, get it back to you guys, if you want me to email you, or any kind of, uh, additional options that are, that are out there. Uh, I just, I didn't look through that as, as much as, I, I knew SMTS had a hub in town, and I knew that Houston was running this scheduled program, so I kinda took into their, their model.
I appreciate you doing the research and putting this presentation together. It's a lot of, uh, good information, and it's very much a need here in Dent County.
Yeah. I'll, uh, I'll get back to you guys and with some additional options and see if there's anything else. If not, I'll try to pursue this, because I think the, uh, grant is due, uh, at the end of September, so.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure, like, should I pursue this, or is it just gonna get immediately shot down as soon as I bring it in?
Thank you.
Kyle, okay, so with the grant due the end of September, what is that timeframe for award? Do you know what kind of that cycle that is like?
I don't know when the award is given. I think it's sometime in December or January. Uh, there's not a lot of information out there, and I don't think this grant is extremely competitive, which is surprising to me. Because when I take a look at how many grants are awarded, you know, it is low. Uh, but in terms of participation, I would say. But, that's all I found.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Good to go on, uh, we're talking bids, and the first one we have is the streetlight lit approval. Josh from the electric department.
We, uh, so we're in the, there's some streetlights, and it's just like everything else in the world, prices are up and down everywhere, and they won't guarantee a price for more than three to four days. So, I'm asking for it do not exceed around eleven thousand five hundred dollars to purchase as many as I can. So, we will have them in stock for replacement of either old ones that we can't repair, or new ones that people wanna pay for to be put up on the properties, or anything like that. So, uh, we have fifteen thousand in that budget right now, so that still leaves some in that budget if something were to happen. I don't really wanna go over what I've suggested, um, because things do happen throughout the year, but we can't control this.
Uh, that's basically it.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any questions in the board? Do we have a motion to approve, um, the request?
I would move to approve their request.
I second the motion.
Eleven five.
We have a motion, and it's second. I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have is the Al Brown Field Lip Station Pump Replacement Bid. Mr. Josh Hunt.
We're proposing a, uh, replacement pipe pump for our Brown Lip Station. Um, the current pumps, you know, fairly aged. Um, we've got a current contract with, uh, Van der Venner Pump on, um, them performing, you know, inspection and, uh, oil changes and repairs on our lip stations. Their recommendation on the last, uh, site visit that they had was to replace this pump, as by, uh, the Department of Natural Resources, we're required to have one spare and two in operation. So, this pump's just at the age, it's, uh, you know, expected to fail in the near future.
Okay. And then, so we have two other lip stations as well, that's?
Well, we currently have seven lip stations, but without ground, there's two pumps required to be in place and are operational. We do have a spare, but as soon as they drop the spare in there, we're gonna be without the, uh, third required pump.
And, um, doesn't look like this wasn't a budgeted item, so we would have to do a budget adjustment separate?
Um, currently, I believe we've got enough money in our reserve in the specialty services to consume this out of their existing budget.
Sure. Okay. Is there any questions in the board? Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve funding for the Al Brown Lip Station pump.
I will second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. I'll call for the vote, all women, Dan.
Yes.
All women, Cisco.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Alright. Next up, we have, um, New and Miss Lani's business. Uh, so we'll move on to resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Salem, Missouri, authorizing the mayor or authorized representative to execute an agreement with the Industrial Del, Del, uh, pardon me, Industrial Development Authority of Dent County, Missouri, for the position of Economic Development Director.
Salem, you wanna talk about this?
Sure. So, this agreement, um, previously, we, the city had had agreement with both the IDA and Dent County, where they contributed to the economic development salary. Um, so this is an updated, this looks very different than the informal agreement we had previously. Uh, the IDA has already voted at their board meeting, um, to contribute, um, a thousand dollars a month for up to thirty-six months total. Um, and so this contract is just putting that into, into format. Um, you know, there are a few stipulations. Payments don't start until we hire someone. If there's a vacancy during that time, payments get suspended until it's refilled. Um, so this just kind of cleans up some what-ifs. So, like I said, uh, the IDA has already voted to approve that expenditure when that time comes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Do we have a motion to approve, uh, resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-four?
I would move to approve resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, nevermind, sorry.
Do we have a motion in a second? Um, I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next up, we have is, um, resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution modifying resolution number four dash twenty twenty-two to incorporate changes in the Affordable Housing Program Modified Agreement for the Welcome Home Twenty Twenty-One Project. So, this, this modification, uh, the original agreement was for twenty-five houses in a total of, um, five hundred thousand. It's been modified down to fifteen homes with a total of three hundred thousand. Um, we had actually, like I said, I thought this was taken care of, and then they just, a couple of weeks ago, sent this to me for the final agreement. In the agreement itself, you'll see, it still has some of the original numbers in the agreement. I did ask about that, they said that's how it needs to be. Um, so, this, along with this modification, was the extension of one year, so that's February first of twenty twenty-five, to complete this pro, uh, program.
Thank you.
And then, just as a final, sorry, I did apply for the extension and the change in this agreement back in January. So, like I said, I've just got this, and you can see that through their letter that introduces it, just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion for resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four? Uh, any financial opinion? Okay, so we'll, probably we need to table this. Okay, um. I guess I can make a motion, or Captain, you wanna make a motion?
I'm gonna be tabled.
Okay.
I'm gonna be tabled this.
Okay, and I'll second that. I'll open your book on that. We'll move on, um, to the reading of bills. Uh, this is gonna be the second reading. Um, first up, we have bill number thirty-six seventeen.
Yeah, the drilling.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna check that, I apologize.
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, so we'll discuss the drilling company invoice.
Good evening, Alderman. Uh, so we had the lightning strike that affected our main water well number four, and, uh, destroyed the well pump, well motor, wire, pipe, replaced by Phil Drilling Company, Flynn Drilling Company. Uh, since this was a time-sensitive matter, there was no time to put it out for bid, the pump had to be replaced immediately. Uh, they had a crane in proximity, so we got him over there and they, uh, put it in. Uh, city set aside funds and reserve accounts for emergency purchases such as this, and requests to use the funds out of the reserve account to pay for the replacement of the pump. Based upon that, we have in the twenty-five budget, the water reserve account has a balance of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars, and I believe we were asking for, uh, the Flynn, the pump ended up being eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. So, an incre, increase in budgeted expenditures to be paid for out of the water reserve pump, so.
My question is, does the city have insurance that's going to cover? Do you have any idea how much?
Well, we don't know how much yet. We are submitting it, we don't know how.
Okay.
But we are submitting it as planned.
If I won't get the full expenditure of this, we might be a portion of the bag.
Yeah, we don't know.
Right, yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Uh, no questions. I just want to thank you guys for all the time and energy you put into correcting the problem while it was down, so it's very much appreciated.
I appreciate that, the, uh, water crew, electric crew, there was a lot of all hands on deck on that, and, uh, thankful that Flynn could get down here and get it done, so, uh, we, you know, all speak more about it and report.
And very thankful that it was put out to social media so quickly for everybody to be aware. So, thank you all, all city staff, for, um, the hands on deck to make sure everybody was aware and the issue was solved. Nothing else on my behalf, but I would move to approve the eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollar increase to the budget for expenditures.
I second that motion.
So, we have a motion, a second. I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Alright, so next up, we have reading of bills, and this is the second reading of these, uh, bills. First up is bill number thirty-six seventeen.
Bill number thirty-six seventeen, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the City of Salem, Missouri.
Any questions or discussions? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six seventeen?
I move that we approve bill thirty-six seventeen.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion, a second? I'll call for the vote, all women, Dan.
Yes.
All women, Cisco.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next up is bill number thirty-six eighteen.
Bill number thirty-six eighteen, an ordinance establishing new rates for sewer services provided by the City of Salem, Missouri.
Any questions or discussions on this bill? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six eighteen?
I will move, uh, to approve bill number thirty-six eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have a motion, a second? I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Next up is bill number thirty-six twenty.
Bill number thirty-six twenty, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the City of Salem, Missouri, beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and appropriating funds for sewer drainage.
Any discussion for bill number thirty-six twenty? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty?
I will move to approve, uh, bill number thirty-six twenty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-one.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-one, an ordinance of the City of Salem, Missouri, to authorize the mayor to execute contracts between the City of Salem, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to aid in shoulder resurfacing at Route J and MacArthur Street locations.
Any questions or discussions for this? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty-one?
I would move to approve bill number thirty-six twenty-one. I second the motion.
Do we have a motion, a second? I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. And the next set of, uh, reading of bills, this is gonna be the first and second reading. And first up is bill number, uh, thirty-six twenty-three.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-three, an ordinance levying for the year twenty twenty-four, a tax of sixty-seven point five zero cents upon each and every one hundred dollars assessed valuation of real estate and personal property within the corporate limits of the City of Salem, Missouri, for general revenue purposes. Permission to read second reading by caption.
Yes, please.
Bill number thirty, bill number thirty-six twenty-three, an ordinance levying for the year twenty twenty-four, a tax of sixty-seven fifty cents upon each and every one hundred dollars assessed valuation of real estate and personal property within the corporate limits of the City of Salem, Missouri, for general revenue purposes.
Any questions or discussions? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six, thirty-six twenty-three?
I'll move to approve bill number thirty-six twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion, a second? I'll call for the vote, all women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-four.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-four, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine oh five and nine oh seven West Seanet Rivers Boulevard from residential to commercial. Permission to read second reading by caption.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-four, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine oh five and nine oh seven West Seanet Rivers Boulevard from residential to commercial. Where is this at?
I thought you could read my line, Jared.
I could, just. Uh, this property, um, and two others were brought to planning zoning commission last Tuesday, uh, the sixth of August, uh, for public hearing and, uh, recommendation, um, after the public hearing of, uh, board, uh, of the commission, I guess. unanimously voted to recommend a zoning of, uh, all three of these properties to you, so, um, as far as the map goes, the, uh, far left-hand corner, you can see it says Walmart, uh, there at the bottom, that's the Walmart store. All the yellow, it's currently zoned commercial. Um, it's a little hard to see, uh, for me anyway, this far away, but the, the property outlined in black, um, was rezoned last year as commercial. It doesn't, uh, show that on the map, and I wanted to make sure that we knew that that's what that was. Um, this property in particular is the one outlined in red.
And then, uh, next two, next two bills will be regarding the properties just south of this current.
Yeah, next two will be, uh, the blue and the, and the orange. Apparently, the property is, uh, was formerly Wolf Brothers Plumbing, now it's, uh, uh, one of the company, Glass House, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Alright. Uh, do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty-four?
I'll move to approve bill number thirty-six twenty-four.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Do we have a motion a second? I'll call for the vote. All women, Cisco.
Yes.
All women, Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-five.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-five, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine hundred West Hobson Street from residential to commercial. Permission to read second reading by caption.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-five, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine hundred West Hobson Street from residential to commercial.
Again, this property was brought up, uh, planning zoning commission last Tuesday. Again, they voted unanimously to recommend a rezone. This one is the orange one that is currently in raw quality. I'm not sure if it's transitioning into a raw block segment.
Thank you. Questions or discussions? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty-five?
I move that we approve bill number thirty-six twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion a second? I'll call for the vote. All women, Dan.
Yes.
All women, Cisco.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-six.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-six, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine oh nine West Scenic Rivers Boulevard from residential to commercial. Permission to read second reading by caption.
Yes.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-six, an ordinance to rezone property located at nine oh nine West Scenic Rivers Boulevard from residential to commercial.
This property, same before, this one is formerly auto connection, now try get restoration.
Questions or discussions? Do we have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty-six?
I move that we approve bill numbers thirty-six twenty-six.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion a second? I'll call for the vote. All women, Dan.
Yes.
All women, Cisco.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thanks, Jared. Next up is reports of city officials, and we will go to Ms. Burbridge.
No report, Mrs. E.
Reports.
Well, I'll be back up. I just wanna say thank you to staff for all of the hard work over the past several weeks, things, the issues that we've had, and all the extra time that's been put in. It's greatly appreciated, and could not do it without the team that we have. So, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Next up is other works, Mr. Name.
Thanks. Just gonna go ahead and run through construction for the past couple of weeks. Finished large water spillway in an area caused some problems off of Jennifer Boulevard. They're working on a remodel of the animal shelter as they can get over there. They're kind of on multiple projects as we go. Working on an office space at the administrative building. And they've started work on two other sidewalk repair projects as well as finishings of curb.
A no collar.
Move on to streets. Streets has a new hire. We picked up a very long career. They'll be starting soon. Helped with heavy equipment and such. They start painting crosswalks and parking places across town. I don't know if you've seen that, in preparation for school. It's been a little difficult to fully focus on painting because we've had a rainier summer than usual, so they're now actually mowing as much as possible at the same time. They dug out over six hundred feet of trench out at the airport and very, helped bury the new airport power line for the animals out there. That should be wrapping up here.
The end of the month.
Final inspections coming up the end of the month, and that'll be powered up and ready to go. It's really, really nice setup. Like I said, mowed brush hog, Golden City, cleaned out stormwater drains, ditches, and debris from bridges. Yard waste maintenance is always conducted weekly. That yard waste lot sees a whole lot of folks and waste and stuff. The mechanic, I like to mention the mechanic working over there underneath the streets. Repair multiple vehicles, trailers, the paint sprayer, and the back truck. Keeping the back truck out there so we can use it. It was used on a project today, so constantly being used. Assisted with sewer repairs and waterline repairs, sharpen lawnmower blades with cemetery crew who are staying busy around, over there keeping up the bubble grass road. Repaired the fuel pump out at the airport. Cemetery crew mowing and trimming quite a bit, and they helped set up and tear down for a few days. Wastewater treatment plant, report included for, I've got a report that I'll read over here for review of the smoke testing findings real quick. Daily testing continues, no issues going on out there. Just a quick summary. Unfortunately, I mean, Josh Dunn did a great job of getting with Missouri Rural Water Treatment and having them help us with smoke testing. They came out, they got day one done, and then we had, unfortunately, we had a report of a sewage leak out on Bone Break, but they had to go out and work on, so we stopped the smoke testing. They found missing cleanout caps as they worked their way around the line, missing, one missing lid. So some of those low-lying areas can get so much water flow that they'll, they can pick up a lid and carry it off, so we couldn't find it. Let's see, cleanouts were leaking. There was a lid offset that they're gonna, that they're gonna reseal or reseal. And clog ended up, ended the schedule of testing, basically. So they're missing cleanout caps and such. We didn't find any major openings or anything. And that was, that was a good one to find out if we had a bad, bad issue. But basically, they were pulled off and had to go, there was a report to DNR of a leak on Bone Break Center. So. Go ahead and run through the water department here before I get to the two DNR visits. Keep it on top of their existing pumps and system terminated. Repaired waterline break on Center Street. They have two new hires, Bill Boils and Chris Price will be starting with the team, so should be helpful. Their backhoe was down for probably ten days, and we got that back online and in service. Had a request for bid out for a backhoe for backup. They'll be used over at the construction department and be on loan. That'll put us at three. We were down to one at one point, equipment breaks, so. We had two DNR complaints, visits and findings. So the first one was, when we were doing the smoke testing, Josh and his crew, we got contacted by Camden Bryant of DNR, he's an environmental specialist, and said that there was a wastewater spill out on the Bone Break Center. Josh immediately responded over there. They located it. There's an eight-inch line that breaks off of Hickory Street, runs across deep down into the Bone Break Center. They got out there, got ahold of Mr. Godey to see if we could get equipment down there and tread lightly on the center, of course. Try not to disturb anything, but it was, excuse me, deep down in there. They got the trailer with the sewer cleanout line, and Josh was able to actually run root cutter up through there and get that line open. So during that DNR visit, Mr. Bryant asked me why I thought that we had, it had been reported to them instead of us. And I, I told him, I said, I wasn't sure, maybe someone didn't know to call the city, but instead called DNR. And he said, you should work with your citizens. And I, I said, we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that they know. If they call the admin building during business hours, we come out and take care of that immediately. Or if they call the police department after hours, it would be worked as well. So kudos to Josh and his crew. That was a real tough job. They were sweating it down. We got it taken care of. The second DNR complaint came a few days later. There was a water quality complaint. Michael Wyatt, DNR environment specialist, came down. He said he had had four to five complaints from the same citizen. And so he came down and said, we're gonna go ahead and do a testing. He went to the residence nearest a complaining residence and took a water sample. And that water sample was clear and chlorine was on point. So that's, that's the end of that. He said he would let the resident know that, and, you know, that that's how that turned out, so. Well, I'm gonna jump to the electric department. See if I have questions. I'm sorry, I'm really going after this, 'cause I've got a lot I wanted to, I wanted to put in here, so. Our electric department, digging a lane line and roughly a six-hundred-foot trench over at the high school. So for the new high school construction trades building, we've gotta finish up a power line that runs all the way up through there. So Josh and his guys have been really hitting after it, which is appreciated. We hired back Ronnie Mosley. We have, we have power lines that he trimmed and stuff, and I wanted to make sure we got on it. Josh and I have been working together to see what we can put together. We are putting in, basically, we've got a request for bid that I will be putting out for main power line, power feed lines, getting those cleared. But this is for residential stuff. There's some folks that have put in work orders, and we just haven't had the time and manpower to get to it. My plan is, we're all about getting it done, so we're gonna get it done as best we can. Disconnects, reconnects for non-payment, locates. Josh and his crew got those knocked out. Fixed repairs, repaired several streetlights. Assisted other departments as needed. I can't, I can't say enough about how much, and, and I know I talk about this every time. The crew's working together. When you see an electric department guy down in a ditch working on sewer line or water line helping out, I mean, it's just, what we've got going on and how it's developing has just gotten really great, so. Kudos, kudos to the troops there, the guys, sorry. Assisted other departments, like I said, as needed, conducted at least ten runway light repairs out at the airport. Removed a tree locally that was about to threaten the power line and trimmed others per work order, so. Uh, let's see, sorry. We got down the streets, we got the mechanic, sorry, I'm just looking through here. Let's jump to what everybody's interested in, and it's our water issues that we had. So it's been a rough two weeks. Not gonna lie, I tell you what, wow. So we'll start with on seven seventeen, the morning of seven seventeen, at approximately three seventeen AM. Well number four was, suffered a major power loss due to a severe lightning strike, causing extensive damage to some of its major contaminants. So like I said, we had Flynn, who we have a contract with to maintain our, our well pumps and such. Luckily, they were in the area. They had a crane that they could get to us, so they broke off from the local job and came over. Getting everything together took a few days, so what that means is, well four is our, our best well. It pumps clear, it pumps five hundred and sixty gallons a minute.
Up to over, a little over six hundred.
Yeah, up to over six hundred. And so when that goes down, that's a substantial danger to our system. So Chris had, Chris is the water superintendent, had well two, six and eight set up, and they're running to keep the city on, on pressure, right? Well, eight pumps turbid water. It's unfortunate, but to keep the water levels up, so we don't have to do a boil order, and so we have water flowing that's chlorinated and potable, it does have turbidity. So, and, and the worst, the worst side of town to see it is over on, I wanna say around the old middle school and high school area, because well eight pumps predominantly over that direction, so you get a lot of turbid water. And I, I appreciate the community being patient. It's not something we wanna do, but we wanna keep everybody with water flowing and such, so. Once Flynn got in and got the well pump replaced, they shocked the well to make sure that, you know, they do everything as clean as they can, but you wanna make sure you don't put any, any bacteria into the water. So unfortunately, when they did their process and departed and we went ahead and tested it, anytime you take a water test, it goes over RAL, it takes twenty-six hours for that back T test to get back to us. Unfortunately, it came back, and it wasn't, it wasn't good. So for the weekend, we decided, Josh, being a water professional, and then Chris, they, they took it, and they rechlorinated and shocked the well. And so that process, you couldn't get that tested until Monday. So that puts us a few more days of turbidity and stuff in the system. And it was, it was hard going, but they, you know, we got it cleared out, got a clean samples back, and got the, got the well back online. So we get past that, systematically work around town to make sure that the wells, that the folks there, we open up fire hydrants systematically, and which causes turbidity to kick up again, 'cause it's settling down into the lines. So we kick that out at the fire hydrant, so that we clean up the water for folks. Takes time, it's unfortunate, you don't wanna deplete the system too much, so. We got through that process, and we were all happy, like, okay, great, things have finally calmed down. Well then, so Saturday, August tenth, the well control system. So over at the water department, there's what's called a SCADA system. It's a supervisory data acquisition system. We've had some variation in place since the nineties. This latest model on the wall was put in in roughly twenty fourteen. So this controls everything. It's like an autopilot of your pumps, to make sure that your water pressure stays up. It calls on pumps to, to increase flow, decrease flow, and that saves us on electricity and whatnot, right? So that system failed to operate correctly on that Saturday, not bringing any of the wells online to run normal water pressure, and it declined to a PSI that normal daily usage, it wouldn't, wouldn't support normal daily usage, so. The SCADA system is set up to give, we have four piece people signed up to get notifications. It didn't notify anybody. And then when it did finally sing a notification, it was already too late. The phone was ringing, and I got called by dispatch. Chris got called, and it was like, hey, we, we've got low pressure, a problem. So running over there, by the time I get to the water department, Chris has already went in and tried to call wells on from the SCADA system, and it's not allowing him to do that. So that tells us the panel's got some issue. So he goes out, flips them off the auto, gets them on the manual, boom, gets pumps up, pressures up. I'd wanna say fifteen, eighteen minutes?
No more than nineteen.
No more than eighteen minutes, so kudos to Chris. The whole water crew is kinda surprised to see everybody kinda come screaming up. We were, we were really stressing about it. Anyway, so once water pressure like that drops down, you run the risk of contaminants or such, or just bugs in general. So what we do is, we went into our plan and said, hey, you know, notify DNR, notify all these folks and everything. And we went ahead and recommended the boil water advisory, which initially we said order, 'cause we, everybody was kinda like hair, hair on fire, you know, not my hair, but hair on fire. And that was mistaken. It was an advisory. DNR calls for orders if they have bad enough tests, so. Long story long, basically, that system failed. We got ahold of the folks that helped us with that system. They're troubleshooting it right now to figure out what's going on. Wells are set on manual to make sure that the water pressure stays at a, a good level. Chris is probably losing sleep going over there every two hours to look at it. But they did the tests. Luckily, the tests came back. We had to wait till Monday morning for DNR to say what tests specifically they wanted. And then we went out, took those samples across the city. Those go to RAL as fast as we could get them over there, twenty-six hours, again, for a back T test. And they came back clean, so. You know, it, it worked out. It's unfortunate, and I'd like to apologize, team, but it was inconvenience. This was one of those things, like a lightning strike. We're not sure, you know, how sometimes you can have lightning hit your, hit your house, maybe hit your TV, and then later you notice something's funky going on with your microwave or something. You're like, oh, wow, okay, it got this, a residual. So we're gonna look into that system and see if anything else was, you know, secondary cause from lightning strike, and it just didn't get us till this point, so. Does anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, I'm talking ninety mile an hour.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanna thank you guys and the entire team for addressing the issue and acting quickly to get it up and going and sending communications out to the community to make everyone aware. I also wanna thank local media and also the county health department to still help to work it out, send information out to keep the public informed. I'm wanting to be a dear hearing advisor. This is the first time since I've been on board, and I've been on here for nearly four years, that, you know, the city had issued some sort of advisory for, for water, water, I mean, I don't know, for many years that the city had to issue one. So it's due to all of us, the city and the community as a whole, so just wanna thank you guys for addressing that. And, and then thank you for the detailed explanation and the reports for the other departments. Sounds like it's been a very busy couple, past couple of weeks.
I'm not even gonna jinx it by saying it, but hopefully smooth sailing, sailing there you go, so, thank you.
Remit Jones has also told me that in her entire time being health inspector, um, it's happened towards like the county side occasionally, but inside city limits, she's never had this issue happen, so, and she says it's impressive for a town our size.
Chris McGurk has been, uh, in the water, around the water department for twenty-eight years and he knows that it happened in one time. I mean, and that's, that's because when they work on a lot of stuff, they keep it pressurized and keeps levels up and keeps contaminants out, so kudos to those guys, so, like I said, can't say nothing about the crews, so.
Steve, I do have a question for you, I just didn't reach out and ask me if it's a violation for them to weed around a stop sign that's by their home?
No, no, I, I would appreciate that, um, I try to hit them as much as possible. If, if citizens let the administrative building know about problems, I carry a weedy with me in my vehicle and I hit those, um, fire hydrants as well. I want to make Salem look like a professional clean place, when you drive through town and picking up trash, I really wish it would catch on, but I feel sometimes like it's, uh, people are throwing it out as fast as I can stop and pick it up, but, um, weed eating, all that stuff, just give me a heads up, we'll take care of it.
Steve had said that, uh, it's much quicker for him to just do it than make the phone call. I told him I would do it, but my husband says I'm too dangerous, so. But I told him I would check and I'd get back with him, so.
Thank you first, just let us know, I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Thanks, thanks Steve. Next up, we have Melissa for parks reports.
Good evening, I won't talk quite as long as you do. Um, I do want people to know, flag football registration is open currently, open the first, it's through the thirtieth, I will be taking fireworks to schools, um, school opens later now, so it's hard to get word out about flag football registration, so, I'll look to be aware. Uh, we have started moving toward revamping the Al Brown concession stand, um, Flynn took everything out of it, power washed it and painted it, um, you know, looking to solutions of getting things set up and buying refrigerator and all that stuff to get it set up. Um, I'm hoping to have it up in front of four flag football, but I'm not going to promise that because finding equipment might be the issue there, so. And then, um, really quickly, the pool, um, it's getting there, it's almost done, so, that's progress. It looks really nice, the new liner, uh, membrane that they use is a little bit different than what we had before and it just looks really nice, thank you Chris, so. Any questions? Ooh, one more thing, and we said at the park board meeting, but we are having issues with walks, yellow jackets, hornets at the park. Um, they live outside and they're selfie lovers, we don't know all the time where they're coming from. Um, we go out there and look periodically, but if somebody sees where they're coming from, to please notify us and we will come and eliminate them.
Any questions? All right, thank you Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, and now this, our reports, starting with all the woman Cisco.
Um, I believe our city clerk would like to give a report as well.
Oh, sure.
She does normally? No, not normally, it was just a short one.
All right.
Brett Young, the street supervisor and I went to the airport, Wednesday or Thursday. Modot wanted to inspect the airport, they do that about once every three years, our last one was in twenty twenty-one and they write a letter and tell us, you know, things of concern that they want fixed. In twenty twenty-one, we had seven items on that letter, um, this time we had one, so all of those things have been fixed and the one that is still on the letter, he explained it, but I'm not a pilot, um, some, like, where the runway, edges of the runway, there are some trees over here and he said, unfortunately, that's not our property, but he still has to put that on there, that those trees are there, so it's, it's not something that we can fix because it's not our property, but it is on the letter, so I wanted to thank the street department, I don't think any of them are here, um, for doing such a great job with that airport and all the work they put in and, um, can you talk about it?
Awesome, thank you for.
It's a good inspection.
Thank you for sharing that and looks like the team or projects making really good progress as well, so it looks like it's almost done, I assume.
Yeah, final inspection in a couple of weeks.
Awesome, all right, well, thank you. All right, now to all the woman Cisco.
Um, I just want to take time to thank the city staff, you guys are awesome. Uh, no matter what time of the day that I have to reach out to a superintendent or chief or anybody, they respond right away and get things solved for us, um, just this water issue that we've had, just seeing how many hours you'll have put in off the clock, not technically off the clock, but not your normal business hours, is just so heartwarming of how much you care about the town that you live in, it's not just a job to you, some of you literally take this to the extent of city of Salem is your home and I'm glad that we share that together. Uh, this weekend, I had a family gathering at the city park and I reached out to Melissa and told her that there's like twenty yellow jackets swarming around this one area, it was within ten minutes that Dustin from the Parks and Recreation Department was at the park with, like, he was ready to take down these uh, hornets or yellow jackets and ended up coming up on a hornet's nest, so, uh, he is, it was just awesome to see him come in and he was in street clothes on his way to go side by side writing that he stopped off the park to make sure this was taken care of. So, your city staff is more than just that, they care about the city that they're, they're working for and that speaks volumes about a crew that goes beyond, I know the police department does things like that also, so just thank you, simply just thank you. Um, also, the, uh, Parks and Recment over the last week and they have a big plan they're coming up with, their next ten year, five year?
Three to five.
Three to five year plan, so, the way that they've broken this up and have this value is, they have these big stones, little stones and they're trying to just see what they can tackle and not just continue to be a big compiling list, they're trying to exclude some things off of their list, which is pretty impressive because, um, they have big projects in mind such as the old fairgrounds, they're trying to come up with a plan with that together of what they want to do there, that, you know, there's talk of a soccer field, there's talk of tennis, there's talk of pickleball courts in another park there, they have all of these ideas, it's just nailing down what is going to be the right idea for that property for the time that we're in, so, um, I'm excited to see what the Parks and Recreation Board's going to be doing. Uh, they have, you know, their main focus is what we currently have, how can we revamp or correct what we already have and put your tax dollars to the best use, uh, for their plans, so, excited to see what they're gonna do with that. The fireworks committee, uh, we had a meeting last night, we are trying to go towards the twenty twenty-five fireworks, so keep an eye out on plans that we have to do fundraisers for this, I know we have one going to come up this winter, we are planning one for the spring and we're also trying to plan for one more before fireworks actually begin. Um, if you are interested in making a donation towards the fireworks, you can always reach out to me, um, at my city email, which is kscisco@salomo.com, um, shoot me an email, call me, whichever, and I would be more than happy to let you know where we're needing help at. Um, other than that, I believe that's all I have to report, I missed you guys while I've been on vacation.
Thank you for the report, um, I don't have much, only thing I would just say is, um, um, school's gonna really start soon and just to, um, bring some awareness to, uh, kids that be, maybe walking from, to school, um, and, you know, to watch out for the increased traffic around school zones and watch out for the school buses and all that good stuff, so just want to, um, wish them a happy new school year for them. And then, uh, we'll move on to all the woman Dan's.
I have the report.
All right. Um, I believe that is all for our meeting tonight and, um, we'll take a motion for, for John.
I'll move Fager, I second the motion.
All right, your motion is taken, I'll call for the votes, all the woman Cisco.
Yes.
All the woman Dan.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thank you everyone for attending this evening.